Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Kingman City Council Work Session to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lienfelder.
Here.
Councilmember Melo Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'll let you—
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Please excuse us.
And Councilmember Wade.
Here.
We have a call.
All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the City Council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. The first item on our work session agenda tonight is Form-Based Code. And we have Sylvia Schaefer and Gary Kellag. Thank you.
Your Honor, members of the council, acting city manager. Just had to say that. This evening, we're going to talk a little bit about form-based coding. And I will kind of lead it off and then really kind of turn it over to what has become our resident expert, and that is Sylvia Schaefer. Sylvia has done a great job. The firm that we'll be doing business with, this Lisa Wise Consulting, these are the people that will start in July and actually begin to look and revamp our codes and looking at our sign codes and everything. When we had this thing come up that we would be wanting to do, that you guys wanted to do a presentation on this, they happened to be in Las Vegas at a convention, and they had done a presentation, and they called Sylvia up and said they would be kind enough to stop over and do it. So a lot of tonight is a combination of both her work and their working with form-based coding. So, let's see. Whoop. Too fast, huh Sylvia? So with that, I'm going to tell you a little bit, and you'll see it up on the screen, and that is the definition. And basically, is that form-based code fosters predictability, high-quality build environments by regulating land development based on physical form and the public realm rather than the separation of land uses. That's quite a bit different, and I know this from a planning and zoning standpoint, it's like, you know, here we go. And then versus place-based, which specifically to the character and the needs of the city, town, or local community. And then there is vision-based, the implement of a clear community vision. But I think with that, I'm going to then turn it over to Sylvia and let her kind of walk you through a brief discussion on what is and where we are headed and what form-based looks like. So, thank you. Sylvia?
Good evening. Going back to my first slide here, the purpose of this presentation is to answer the following. Why would a city use a FBC? Why are FBCs successful as an alternative tool to standard zoning regulations? What is an FBC? Which Gary kind of went over already. Why is an FBC different in approach to conventional zoning? There will also be a few examples from the FBC that was just adopted in Las Vegas. And then also some clarification of misconceptions related to FBCs. So, form-based zoning has a higher emphasis on form rather than use density, and so this gives you a little idea with conventional zoning, the use density was a larger emphasis, and now we'll be more emphasized on form. There is also a connection between public space and private space. Standard zoning only establishes zoning standards and regulations on private property, but the public realm is important, too. The frontages of buildings, relationship of buildings to buildings and buildings to the street. Some FBCs comprehensively address all sides of the buildings. Others are more specific to just the front. So, in standard zoning, there is limited aesthetic regulations. And here's an example. In 1768, Thomas Jefferson built his home in Monticello, Virginia, what is now considered a masterpiece. The beautiful historic landmark building includes unique elements and features such as columns, elevated front entry, triangular roof forms, window details, and use of red brick. And this was an inspiration for some design guidelines. But here's an example of what can happen if those architectural forms and details from the previous slide are applied under standard zoning. This building has all the same features but does not meet the intent of the desired aesthetics of the community. Looks like I'm missing a picture here. So, standard zoning plans have well-intentioned policy statements such as infill and development that shall occur in existing urbanized areas include the building of affordable multifamily housing near transportation. There's my picture. Okay. So, this is what the vision would be with this statement, but what could happen is without specific standards in the zoning code, this is what can happen. This is an example of a development from a community on the East Coast that did not meet the visions intended. The visual highlights the need for the being clearer with the intended outcomes produced by our zoning codes. So, yesterday's tools, which is something we use now, is use the separation of uses. So, it consciously separates uses, focuses on density and floor area ratio, regulations geared to suburban developments. And this is actually a little piece of our own zoning map of the downtown area. So, separation of uses, it's showing that the red is in commercial, residential is green, yellow. That's how we are doing it now. So, this is red on the zoning map, which is typically commercial. So, target would fall into a commercial, and so would this other building. So, each of these photos are red on the zoning map, but they are distinctly different in Another example of separation of uses is if we want a different form of development from a suburban neighborhood, we need a different set of zoning tools to get us there. So, this is an example of a single home separated by a green buffer of not really usable open space from a strip mall shopping center. But please note the attempt to create a pedestrian connection across the open space to the back of the store into the loading dock, which is probably never used. So, this very typical. Yesterday's tools also include floor area ratio. So, floor area ratio is a useful tool in conventional zoning codes as a measure of bulk or intensity. However, it is imprecise and lacks predictability. So, we don't really know what we may get with the new development. The one example showing one story that's 10,000 square feet, the ratio can also be met by the 10 stories at 1,000 square feet each. So, form-based code would define that more. Different places need different regulations. If the built form on the left is desired, then a different code is needed from the type of the code that allows for the image on the right, or that in the middle. So, again, if the city wants something new, then we need a different set of tools. Form-based code components include transect zones, regulating plan, building type standards, frontage standards, civic space standards, and street standards. And this is an example of how transect zones are divided into categories. So, we mainly start with the most natural zone as transect one, and slowly go all the way to the most dense area, like the special districts. And as you go through each zone, then you have probably more restrictions typically of how you want those zones to be. Now, here's a regulating plan. A regulating plan is similar like a zoning map, but it's based on transect zones rather than uses. Instead of mapping the use, the map maps the forms or character that you want to see. So, the darker the color, the more intense the form. So, that would be your more urban, the darker ones, versus the lighter would be more natural. And here's a few misconceptions. FBCs do not regulate use, so that's a misconception. Even though form is prioritized, FBCs do regulate use. Emphasize is on uses appropriate in a walkable environment. FBCs can be written to prohibit undesirable uses, and current use entitlements are preserved. Another misconception is FBCs are too complicated, whereas FBCs are organized systematically, are written to be user-friendly, and they provide a lot of tables and graphics to clarify and ease of use for both staff and the property owners. FBCs aren't tested is another one. FBCs are increasingly common across the country. They have been utilized for decades. Use is continuing to be more accepted, and they are responding to evolving needs. FBCs are just guidelines, that's also one. FBCs are adopted into development codes, so they're actual codes that are enforceable and implementable standards. They have legal standing and are regulatory. So, here's some of the benefits of FBCs. They're place-based, prescriptive, codifies standards based on desired built form, are easy to use, highly illustrated, they're predictable, are a tool for neighborhood historic preservation, establish the right scale of development, provide economic benefits, and promote development that has health benefits. And here's a little additional information. An FBC has some similar features to an historic overlay district in which there is a strong design aspect for development. The difference is that under a historic overlay district, the traditional land use zoning requirements continue to be applied to the area, while an FBC becomes the new zoning district where the physical form takes precedent over the actual uses. A hybrid FBC and historic overlay district can be created to address both historic preservation and form. And then I added a few photos of our downtown area. Otherwise, if you have any questions or comments for me, that's all I have for right now.
Are there any questions? Comments? Councilwoman Staley?
So, one of the first things I think about are the interchanges that we're talking about, especially Kingman Crossing, where the discussion is a lot of retail. Would we be able to implement these form-based codes in that area to really direct how the development would look years down the road so that we'd have more trees or bike lanes, walking paths, green spaces? Is that something that we could expect coming from form-based codes?
Yeah, with form-based codes, they can be applied to, say, districts. For example, Las Vegas area had like 12 districts that they did a form-based code on. They can be a hybrid in the zoning ordinance, so that's kind of what we have our consultants coming in for, to assist us with those types of things, because they could be applied to areas. We have overlays on Wallaby Mountain Road or Faying Street. So, they could be applied to those areas as well as maybe something you'd want to do near the interchange, but that can be done with our zoning ordinance update.
Great. Will that process include public input?
Correct.
It will?
Yes.
Okay. So, the public will be able to come in and say, this is what we'd like this area to look like, and that will be taken into consideration? Because I did see a quote here that talked about what the public wanted to see out of certain areas.
Yep. That will be part of the job.
How long do we expect this process to take?
Well, the consultants will be starting in July, and we have estimated timeframe of up to two years, I believe. Yeah.
Two years?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's because we're going to go through the entire city, is that correct?
Update the zoning code, sign code, expansion of historical overlay, and with the consideration of the form-based code.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that. It's a, you know, this is a really exciting subject for me, and I'm glad that, since we're already going to be comprehensively revising the zoning, that we'll be looking at this process. So, as a part of that, will we be looking at zones throughout the city? I mean, just listening to the presentation and some conversations we've had before, like a hybrid form-based code and historical overlay may be most appropriate for downtown to help bring that to where I think the community wants to see it end up. But then, like Councilwoman Staley said, you know, maybe there's some other areas that are publicly high-profile when you have people coming through town that we may want to target as well. But it's definitely a tool that I think, when you look at the general plan, it could help us to accomplish a lot of the general plan goals that were identified in 2014. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, my understanding is that by the end of this two-year period, we would have the entire city, and some designated as districts, and each with its own type of form-based codes or dedicated form-based codes?
Well, again, we're going to really rely on the consultants to tell us, you know, the formation of the districts, what they should look like. And another example would be just our neighbors to the south in Havasu. They set up districts, for an example, a medical district. And within that district, they also allowed for additional height in their buildings. They took a look at the consideration of the topography and said, all right, we can go six stories here, and they can't do it in other places. But again, you know, that's how a district can come into play. So, they've, the one thing that really made our decision with this organization to hire them was we had formed a committee and represented several of the departments within the city that interviewed these people. And the one thing we felt with Lisa Wise was that they would push us. They would push us to the next and the new level. And also, and the other thing that they had was their people and signs are actually world-renowned for their work in sign codes. And so, that's, you know, for maybe once, we can really be ahead of the curve instead of 47 years behind it. So, I think that's the biggest thing. We know this is an awfully big undertaking, and we haven't taken it lightly. So, the decision to hire them and to what we're going to be expected of us to support that, so, we're excited.
Thank you. It is exciting. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We appreciate your presentation and look forward to two years of more talk about this.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the sidewalk obstruction ordinance discussion. And I think, Mr. Cooper, you're going to really lead us on this?
Yeah, I know this is something that Ron was going to handle, so I found out I was going to run this show about 20 minutes ago. So, but the idea is, I think there was some issues about certain things or objects that block the sidewalk, namely some of those basketball hoops. You know, there's garbage cans, there's people parking on the sidewalk, there's weeds, there's a number of things that could obstruct the sidewalk. In our code, there are various rules and regulations, even with the state statutes about blocking sidewalks. It's illegal to park a car on the sidewalk under state statute. Our codes cover some weeds. You know, I think we regulate, you can't, you're not allowed to put your garbage can on the sidewalk, and I know some people do. And I know the sanitation department does a good job trying to get folks to not do that. We don't really have any regulations concerning the basketball hoops or nets or other, you know, toys that sometimes are out there. But we do, like I say, regulate trees that sometimes overhang. There's a limit on how high you have to be so people can walk underneath. I guess my suggestion is the council's looking to review some sort of obstruction ordinance. What we might want to do is, we have a team, we have a staff team called the Abatement Team. It does more than abatements, but they handle a lot of neighborhood issues. And it's made up of my office, fire, PD, public works, planning and zoning folks. Basically, every department has their hands in this. They meet probably once a month and talk about neighborhood issues. Primarily, it's abatement issues, but a lot of it's the quality of life or those things that the folks run into in the neighborhood with something like this. And they'll also, because you have all those folks together, will be able to talk about, all right, if we're going to draft something, how are we going to enforce it? Who's going to cover it? Do it, you know, what's the manpower issues? Where are we going to go from there? So, I guess my brief comment or statement along with this is, I think if the council's interested in this, then just let us know. And then what we'll do is we'll refer it to this committee and let them kind of, to start looking into it and see what they can come up with, see what's around the state, around the country, or anything else like that.
Thank you. I would mention that I asked for this to be on the work session some months ago because of some comments that have been made by citizens, especially those with special needs or that are handicapped.
ADA issues.
ADA issues. That it really is a problem for them when they become limited by obstructions on the sidewalk. So, I appreciate your information on this and your option. Are there any other comments about this or questions?
I would have just one question, Carl. It's just mostly focused on residential areas or business environments, because what I think of when I go to like a busy main street, like a downtown, I would think that you would actually want your business owners to go out and put all their stuff on the sidewalks and to invite people in. You know, when it's, when they can't put anything out on the sidewalks, it's sort of cold and inviting, and you know what I mean?
And that would kind of spiral into, I think, even the stuff that Gary was just talking about, because the signs that some folks place out on the sidewalks, there's some allowances that you can do, some on the signs, but you can't completely block the sidewalk. In the downtown area, we actually have, there's a historic overlay regulation that you're not allowed to have, I think, more than three items for display out on the sidewalk as to not clog up the sidewalk. So, I think that's something that, yeah, we could go beyond just the neighborhood and deal with some of this commercial area as well, because I think there's some of those issues. You want to make sure that, you know, business is open and inviting, but we also want to make sure that we can get folks through without getting some congestion. I know we've run into some trouble with the, you know, when those seating areas open up outside some of the bars and restaurants, and then we'll have, you know, a planter and some garbage cans, and all of a sudden, you've got these S-curves where people can't get through. I know we've had some problems with some wheelchairs not being able to get through, so we had to move things around a little bit. But I think this is an opportunity to try and see if we can address something. And it might, like I say, some of it might be handled under one form, and some of it might come under another form, like say with the planning and zoning updates, especially because it'll address some of the sign code issues, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, my original intent on this was more of the residential areas where, you know, it's just a matter of being able to walk down the sidewalk. But I do think that it's good to look at both, but in different, probably in different forms.
Yeah, and it might, it probably wouldn't be all done at the same time. Like I say, if we're going to be working on some signage issues, that'll come along later. Obviously, we're talking about a two-year time period for that. But some of the neighborhood issues, we can deal with much quicker, definitely, so.
So, is that clear that we would like to have the group that you're talking to?
It seemed like we had a lot of nodding over here, so.
A lot of nods? Oh, certainly. Go ahead.
And I would just like to add one little bit, since there's nodding and we're going to move forward, if maybe for the commercial areas, especially thinking about downtown and our merchants, we have, there's a lot of different types of businesses downtown that are using the sidewalks. So, maybe if we give some leeway so that we just have a certain amount of distance that, you know, would cover all of the ADA, that they must leave open, but give them a little bit more leeway, more than three items, or, you know, that way that we can have these really neat displays or chairs and tables, but maybe do an education piece where we would say, you need this many feet so somebody can get by.
Well, then we're starting, we're also, I'll bring up the issue of encroachments, because it's the city's right-of-way, and what you're doing is you're having these commercial operations encroaching in the city right-of-way, and this is another issue we have to work with, too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So many issues. But if I understand this correctly, the downtown area and the commercial aspect of this may be handled under the form-based coding process?
Some of it could. There may be a few things that we can pick up along the way that might address a few things.
Okay.
But again, like I say, we'll refer to this group, and they can kind of go through all of the various codes that we have, state statutes, and see what's overlapping, what's available, and what we can address now and what we might have to work on a little bit later, so.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
You go to Williams, you go to Prescott, you know, there's downtowns, there's stuff on the street or on the sidewalk. So, maybe rather than recreate a wheel, you could look at some of those successful places and how they handle it. We don't want to be any more restrictive than that, so.
Yeah, and that's what this group does. We've done that in the past when we get a task, and they'll look at, see what happens in some other cities, some other states, and what works best here and how to incorporate it, so.
Okay. Well, I think that is the direction for the council, that you'll move forward to this group, the abatement group, and we will get back a report on some of the options for sidewalk obstruction. Thank you. Okay. Third item, special event process discussion. Jack Plante, street superintendent.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we were being prepped for having a short window, and it looks like I got all kinds of times to entertain you guys now.
Go for it.
So, what we're doing is looking at a revamp, and this will be a two-part. Unfortunately, Josh got dragged under the bus with me, had to take a victim, I guess. But we're working on looking at our special event policies, program procedures, and then as well, Josh will talk to you about a potential grant portion that will come into that as well. Some of you guys were around. Couple years ago, we went through, reviewed the application and the process we had at the time, made some changes, and then we've been running on that policy now for about two years. There are things that we can definitely see we'd like to improve and make better. That way, we can have nice, clean, safe, sustainable events throughout our community. We reached out to multiple agencies throughout our area, talked to Bullhead, Mojave County, Lake Havasu City, Phoenix Peoria Flagstaff. We ended up talking to Prescott as well, and Prescott had a really nice model or a well-put-together program that we'd like to model. So, really, this is just an informational piece on something that we're working on, something that we want to get done as quickly as possible, and we'll be bringing back to you guys at a later date. And I'll kind of go through a little bit of an outline and try not to stick my foot in Manager Foggan's mouth, because we've gone through this, and Josh, myself, Mr. Owens, my public works director, and Manager Foggan have all been talking through this. So, some of this is also news to some of the other departments as well that will be working on this. One of the unique things that Prescott had that we liked, and I'll give you a background on our system right now for special events. So, the applicant comes in, they pick up their application, they fill it out, they file it back with the clerk's office, and that's put in to track it. That's a system we use to track that permit. At that point, there are particular departments and divisions that are assigned to track it. And so, if you need park facilities, if you have something going in the street, police, fire, planning, zoning, everybody gets a chance to review this and sign off on it. Once that's done, the clerk's office issues the finalized permit back to the applicant. At times, this becomes kind of cumbersome, because there's not a lot of overlap between certain departments and divisions, but through streets and PD, oftentimes, there are, because we're both looking at the traffic safety aspects of that. So, we're looking at traffic control, we're looking at, you know, their pedestrian plans and what they're going to be trying to accomplish in that special event. And so, we communicate pretty well, but at times, we've gone and both of us have tried to contact the applicant, because we do this outreach individually. So, each department, each individual is going out to this applicant. So, it makes it kind of cumbersome for the applicant as well. What Prescott does is they put all of their applicable, which is pretty much every department, I think, they had. We actually attended one of their meetings. And so, monthly, they have one day in a certain time period where the applicant needs to show up, and then they have all of the departments there that are going to, the applicant would have to deal with. So, the applicants file their paperwork, everybody knows what's going on. They sit down and they go through the application and all of the information within that together. So, if police or fire or streets has a question and they overlap, it's all hammered out right there in one hit. The one we went to, they didn't have any past events, but they also do a review of past events. So, the people will come in, you know, the month prior, whatever events they had, they'll look at those. What issues did they have? You know, how did it go? If it was great and everything's great, fine. If they have things that they need to look at and address for the future internally or externally, they can hammer those all out right then. And that's what we're working toward. Like I say, this is kind of a high-level view of that. But what'll end up happening is we'll provide, as Councilman Lienfelder said, no reason to reinvent the wheel, and Prescott was kind enough to actually share their documents with us. They actually have policies, they have a procedure manual, all their applications, all that stuff. They were very generous in allowing us to use. So, that gives us a great starting point. So, we'll take all this information, we'll have a special event committee that will review all this, and that'll be the applicable department, too, that's going to involve. And again, that'll be pretty much everyone here or every department. We'll go through this, we'll have a kickoff meeting, they'll get all the documents and forms, have an opportunity to review that, bring that back. We'll make our changes. At that point, we'll have some public outreach and have some public input on what we're doing throughout the process, not only for the policies and procedures, but the applications, and then also for Josh's portion potentially. That'll go through review again, make sure all the changes that we need are That'll go through review again, make sure all the changes that we need are done. Once that's, once that's completed, we would provide that to you guys for comments and review, and then at some point in the near future, we would be adopting that as policy. Again, this is, this is news to a lot of departments within the city, but there are policies, and there are actually codes and ordinances which Prescott has adopted. Whether we go that far or not, I'm not sure. That'll be a discussion with Carl, with PD, with fire, and the departments that would be affected by that. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have from my portion, and then I can turn it over to Josh.
Any questions? Councilwoman Staley?
First, I want to say the new process from two years ago, the one we're using right now, has made things easier, especially for events like 5Ks that we do over and over again. So I'm wondering about this, having a meeting, I have, one concern is that a lot of times when you have a first-time event, they really, they have no idea the city's process, so I'd be concerned that they were going to miss that, that window, when you guys were all going to be there for the meeting, and then it might be too late. So is there going to be some kind of leeway if somebody's at the last minute trying to have a big event, and they just didn't know that this, that they needed to be there on that day at that time to sit at the table?
So honestly, I think that'd be a question for Manager Foggan.
Okay.
There are, Prescott has some, some pretty solid timelines that they stick to, and that is addressed in their, their policies, whether we stick to that or not. You know, planning and things that come to these, the people that are putting these events on, they have the ability, and what's actually nice, too, they have a, in that procedure manual, it has everything, all the timeframes, the steps they need to take. Where Prescott is different, and we probably won't be there for quite some time just because of financial issues, is they actually have a special event coordinator. So you go to this coordinator, there's an initial document you take to them, and she looks at it and says, oh, okay, yeah, you're going to need permits for the park, you're going to need this, this, and this, and outlines them, and kind of walks them through the process. So ultimately, that would be the place to go. We can address your concern with a lot of public outreach, and that's where we'll have, you know, the public meetings and have people involved, have it on our website where it's easy to find, easy to follow, and, you know, again, Manager Foggan can probably give you some better information on that.
Okay, I could see how a coordinator would definitely help get that person on the right track. What do you, how do you see this working for events, like a race that happens every single year, same course? Do you see that person coming in and having that meeting, that sit-down? Or for, for regular, for regular events, would you just have a one-time and then kind of sign off on it and let it go?
Me personally, I would see this being an annual event, because a number of conditions can change. The event we went to, they actually have a, a very large bike race, and the applicant for that was at that review. One of the things they discussed is road closures, so their street guys are aware of, okay, we're going to have these roads closed, we're doing construction here, restricted access, that sort of thing. So I would see them coming back. One of the applicants that was there was maybe there half hour at most, talked about it, they went around the room, says, okay, it was a reoccurring event, this is one that they had already seen. The previous year, he was coming back for the, the upcoming year. It was pretty quick. I understand time is important for people. You know, the big part is you're able to hash all that out and save time, not only for the individual that's applying for the event, but also city staff that's contacting them in six different directions.
Okay, and that, you said he was there for a half hour, was that to, for the bike race, for the whiskey?
No, that one wasn't. This gentleman was doing, I forget what the event was, but he was not there for the bike race.
Okay, all right, thanks, Jack.
Just a couple of questions. From the time that an applicant up in Prescott turns in an application to the time they get a green light, what's the average turnaround time up there for them?
So Prescott, they actually put timelines on their side. One of the things that they won't do, and again, these are, these are just things that they do, may not be what we adopt, we need to make it fit Kingman. One thing to consider, hopefully at some point in time, we'll have very large events like Prescott does, but they have events that, you know, they're drawing upwards of 50,000 people in a single event. They have a 45-day window, they won't approve anything out further than that, but they have a window that they need to approve it by. The 45 days, they'll review it, they'll go through it, the applicant can come in, but the reason they don't approve it, or at least my interpretation of their, is they don't approve it because, again, as time goes on, things change, things that are sometimes out of the city's overall control. The event holder has a route that they're going to use, and there's a gas leak, or a water leak, or something that comes up unexpected. That gives them the ability to go back and, and help that applicant make it through those changes.
Great, and I just have one more question. I was at a meeting a couple of years ago, and one of the things that we talked about, and we may be doing this already, and I apologize if we are, but I'm going to ask about it. You had mentioned possible self-certification for traffic control or placing cones, where somebody that holds an event every year, every single year, they can go through some sort of a training with you and get a certification, and then they'll be able to go out and place cones and things like that? Is that what, are we doing that right now, or?
So that policy is detailed in our, our current application. The current application, I hadn't noticed it when, so you're, you're correct. So to back up, when we did the review of the current application, or the, the implementation of the current application in there to try and make it more accessible for people, we had initially brought that to council and adopted for them to get a traffic control supervisor certification. That takes three days. When Manager Foggan was here, we met with HR and Manager Foggan to see if we could reduce that to a traffic control tech. That is currently in our policies to date. I'm only aware of one individual who has actually gone and taken the traffic control tech certification course, but to date, to my knowledge, no one has actually utilized that program.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? You said in Prescott, they have a 45-day deadline, I guess, could you go back to that? Is there a certain time at the other end of the spectrum where permitting is not allowed? They, they have to come in 45 days prior, is that what you're saying?
No, so the, the application window is actually further out, and they're tiered, so they have different types of events. They have A-events, B-events, C-events, and each of those have certain criteria that make them that type of event. Maybe it has road closures, or it's on private property, or in city parks, and it's spelled out in their procedures manual. So they, they have a pretty lengthy time to apply. They don't provide the final approvals back until they get closer. You can go through the review process, they'll accept it, they'll do everything, but you would come in the 45 days prior, too, and, and that, well, I'd say you come in, you would get your permit back no sooner than the 45 days out.
I had a lot of questions recently about our 30-day, people thinking we had a 30-day requirement, that you had to, had to apply at least 30 days prior to an event. So I know that it's not on our current application, though. So is, does the Kingman have any current requirements on that regard?
Kingman does, and, and I don't want to speak inaccurately, but looking at the permit, and I'm assuming it's the one that's online, it does have a timeframe in there for, for two events, one being a road closure, and one being just a typical special event which may occur on private property.
And that one was 30 days?
I, I believe it was 30 days, was the minimum, and I think the, the, the traffic control portion was 60 days out.
Thank you. Okay, okay.
Since we have so much time.
We do have time.
So as I'm sitting here, because this is the first I've heard about these changes, and you know that I'm involved with, with some different events, so as I'm thinking about this, I'm going to keep an open mind until it gets a little bit further, but some of my concerns that I'm having right now is that maybe Kingman's not ready for this. And I say that only because Prescott's got a city staff person just to do this, and then they also, they're having these large events that are usually done by professionals, they're put on by a professional event coordinator, whereas our events are put on by volunteers and nonprofits, and so my concern is just, we can't make this too complicated for the, for the average volunteer, you know, and we don't want to make it too complicated for staff either. So as we move forward, I know that you're already keeping that in mind, but I just want to put that out there, that we, we, we're not quite there where we're having events done by professional companies yet, and it is hard for your average volunteer to sort of navigate the system the first time.
Absolutely, I agree, and that's why I say we'll review this and make it Kingman's process. We know that events that occur in Prescott aren't ours, you know, they're, they may be bigger on a larger scale, but Prescott does also have some smaller events, similar to ours, First Fridays, Andy Divine Days, those sorts of types of events, so they're able to help those types of events through also.
Good, okay, thank you.
Mayor, could I just clarify one thing?
Yes, Mr. Cooper.
Just, just under our city code, the, the event needs to be submitted at least 30 days in advance of the, or 60 days, a correction, 60 days in advance of the date of the event to the clerk's office. The chief of police needs to approve or deny that within 14 days after receipt, but he can extend that, but he has to provide notice, and that, that 60-day time can be waived for basically good cause. So, and I know that's, that's happened, but I just, I just wanted to clarify, we do have a timeframe, so.
Wow, that is the first I've heard 60 days. So that's in our code, 60 days, and we have had some good cause to make it less. Okay, thank you.
I just had one more comment. You know, being so dependent upon sales tax, I would say, you know, as a city, we obviously want to have as many special events as we can. So whatever process we end up with, and I'll leave it to Manager Foggan, but it'd be great to have a point person assigned for all of the people that want to hold a special event in Kingman. So they would only have that one person to, to guide them and lead them through the process, and really act as their liaison with staff, just to make it easier for them to hold special events. I think it's good economic development to do that, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I guess, thank you so much, Mr. Plante, is Josh next?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, guys, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Noble.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. In your packet, we included the former application for tourism grants that the City of Kingman used to have, a application that the, like Havasu City Convention and Visitors Bureau has, and then one that Prescott has. So it's just for reference, wanted to kind of go over some of the characteristics and items that we have in these. Are they not in your packets? No, I don't believe so.
We don't have a, we have no packets. I'm sorry, they're not in here.
We can table this item, or just kind of go over some general discussion?
Well, we do have time, so let's pursue the discussion.
So in the former application that the city had provided, it had some generic questions, yes and no's, and kind of essay-driven. But generally, the idea is if we can provide some funding, to Councilmember Staley's point, a lot of our local events are put on by nonprofits and volunteers, and this might help alleviate some of the concerns with the funding needed to put on an event. In the past, it's been largely marketing that was provided, funding for marketing. One of the main things that we're seeing with people that are putting in events is the concerns about traffic control, so potentially, this could also go to help alleviate traffic control, and then that might help out with our streets department, and their managing of people and assistants, and then also the people that are putting in for assistance and putting in their events. The, the city of Prescott has about $75,000 that they set aside for providing assistance for event promoters and organizers. There's about 27 different organizations that they work with to provide those funds for. 75% of those funds have to be used for marketing, and then the other 25%, you know, for whatever, whatever they put in the application and how that application is reviewed. They have some different criteria in the application that they base it off of, and they score out of 100 points, and so depending on how much your scoring is, that's the percentage that you would be awarded in your application. I'll just read off those criteria now. There are three main things that they have in their criteria, and that is, does the event generate a strong marketing message with a strong emphasis on marketing outside of the area? And two, does it create a positive economic impact in terms of overnight stays, percentage of out-of-area visits, and direct versus indirect spending? And number three, does it create a positive community benefit, including involvement of local volunteers and coordination with other community organizations? And they look at those three criteria, and when they're looking at the funding request and deciding on how much funding the, the applicant might be entitled to. Along with that, they have an economic impact formula that they go off of, looking at how far away people are coming, how many room nights were used, and then they use that to evaluate post-event to see, was it worth it? Because that applicant may come back next year to apply for funding again, and does the city want to invest? With Lake Havasu City, it's a pretty short, one-page application. This is not through the city, it's through the CVB, so they have a private committee that goes over those funds, and then they have a checklist that they go off of, and that's not public. This forum is public, but that checklist is not public. The City of Prescott, all of the events that put in for that funding assistance have got to have their application in by a certain date prior to the fiscal year. I don't know if that's something that would work for Kingman, that's something that we would need to discuss, is how many far out, or how many months far out would we require people to apply for funding in order to get the funding, and would it be reimbursement or, you know, provided outright? All of those things are things that we would need to discuss and see how Mr. Foggan and the council would like to see that move forward. The, when they looked at providing funding assistance, they look at two different kinds of events. They look at a, a community event, so it's quality of life, and they also have tourism events, and they have different criteria that outline what creates a tourism in, in the Prescott application. But that's just kind of some general concepts out of those different applications from Kingman, Lake Havasu, and Prescott, that we could look at considering in whether we wanted to start up a program and how we want that to look.
So this would be a discussion during our budget process this year? Is that a program that will be coming forth for tourism dollars?
We did put in, I think, $25,000 in our request for council to consider and look at, that would go towards funding this program.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Noble? Councilwoman Nelson?
Thank you. If we could get that, whoever has that, I think that would be very helpful for all of us. Thank you.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I thought we had it in there, and it would have been a benefit for you to be able to look at it as we were going through this.
It's all right, you'll get it to us, no stress, thank you. No worries, you'll get it to us, thank you.
No worries, you're right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just one question. The money that the City of Prescott sets aside, do they use that to recruit promoters and new events into their city?
So on their Tourism Events Information page, it says that the Tourism Office works with the Recreation Services Office to bring more than 20 sporting tournaments into town, so they do go out and they recruit sporting to bring tournaments in. It doesn't talk anything about other outside promoters. I know the Lake Havasu CVB, they do actively go out and try to recruit event promoters to put on events in town. I think the Prescott application is more for nonprofit groups, but the Lake Havasu, Lake Havasu's grant program could be available for for-profit organizations as well if they're putting on a major event that would bring a lot of people to town.
Great, thank you.
For those recipients of the grant funds, I, I would assume that they are also working with your department to leverage the resources that, that you offer through marketing of events in our area.
Correct, so when you look at, like, Lake Havasu City, the, the grant program they have in there, on the website, it talks about the benefits that the Tourism Office can offer with helping to identify places to market and, you know, promote the event. And we, I, I don't- And we, I, I don't see why we would do it any differently.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you so much, Josh.
Thank you.
Our final item on the work session agenda is work session discussion. And we are going to hear from Sidney Muley, our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Mr. Foggan asked that I address this item with all of you this evening. As the council is aware, and hopefully the public is becoming more aware, our meetings are transferring back to the city complex at our next meeting on the sixteenth. With that, one of the changes that's going to be coming is our work sessions and our regular business meetings will no longer have the same agenda, they won't be put together like they are right now, they will have two separate agendas. One thing we're running into more and more is confusion in the community about when our meetings actually begin. So we'll have people show up at five-thirty for the work session, excuse me, and not realize that they have to wait until seven o'clock for the business meeting or the call to the public and what they're actually here for. And it leads to quite a bit of frustration on their part that they had an hour and a half, two hours, that they could have been home with their family, that they were here. So that's something that we want to look at addressing with that change. And part of that, staff is also suggesting looking at moving the business meetings back to five-thirty and having the work session at a separate time, so either beginning it at four-thirty or four o'clock on council Tuesdays, or at noon on off-council weeks, so the second and fourth Tuesdays, or having a longer work session on a completely separate evening. So that's one thing we wanted to get some input from the council on this evening, is what you would like to see, how often you would like to have work sessions. So that was what I handed out, was just some of the options that have been thrown out. We're open to any suggestions that the council would like to see, but we feel that it would be beneficial for the community and for the staff to be able to look at shifting that back rather than having our meetings run so late into the evening. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any input.
Okay, just to make sure I'm on board here, we're clarifying, we don't vote during work sessions. So tonight, you're giving us this sheet kind of to
We're looking to get a consensus on some direction from the council.
And so you'd like us to discuss this a little bit and maybe let you know what we're thinking or how we're feeling, and then you'll come back? Based on what we circle here?
Well, you can circle something here, hand it to me later, if there, if in your discussion, there's kind of a clear direction you would like us to head, then we can absolutely take that as our direction. And then we'll look at going from there as far as logistics. I imagine the next meeting will follow the same template that we have right now, that our work session will begin at five-thirty and the business meeting at seven, but we'll have the two separate agendas to make that absolutely clear for the community. And then we would look at implementing this in May.
Okay, so the next work session will be in, on April sixteenth?
Yes.
At five-thirty?
Yes, that is my understanding.
In the city council chambers?
That is my understanding.
Okay, okay, is there discussion, comments on this? Councilwoman Staley?
So my opinion is, I, I think it should stay on the same day, it just helps, I think in general, because there are some citizens who do enjoy coming and listening to what we're working on. Originally, this was started with Manager Bacon, and we really needed it then. There were a lot of things happening, they were happening quickly, and we, you know, our calendar was full. I don't see that it's as full as it was before, and, you know, here we are tonight, six-thirty, and we're really done. And then, and then there's some openings down the road. So I feel like we could do it once a month at four-thirty, that's just my opinion.
And another thing to note is, we can certainly have separate work sessions like we do right now, for example, the budget work sessions. Those are on a completely separate day, completely separate time, because they require so much more attention, planning, and your planning as well. So those will continue to take place, so if we have another item that comes up that we think needs an hour, two hours, or a big chunk of that time, we would look at having a special one.
And I also believe that we could probably enrich the department reports to include some of the things that we are currently now addressing in work sessions.
Yes, Mr. Foggan has given that direction to the senior leadership team.
And especially if we, and, and this is not, this is not to refer back to that packet item, but especially if we get a lot of information up front for, before the regular meeting, I will probably be more productive in that session. So, thank you, I tend to agree, I would, I prefer very much to keep it on the same day, because otherwise, we're here every, every week of, of, every week of the month, and
Well, and depending upon what commissions, pardon me, Mayor, but depending upon what commissions we're all on. We are here every week, so, you're right, yeah.
There's work every week, but, but formal work sessions, I would prefer to have on the same day as council and, and also start at four, four-thirty. I, at four-thirty probably is adequate if we enrich the business part of the meeting.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman? Let's keep in mind that I work full-time until five, and that would be difficult for me to work, to have it at four, four-thirty.
Another thing that I was asked to mention is that work sessions are not required. They have a lot of great information, we hit a lot of those subjects, but they're not required for your attendance. They're not considered part of your mandatory duties as a member of the council. So Manager Foggan wanted me to just remind the council of that as well, that they're a lot more informal.
And there is one other aspect to this, and in discussions with Manager Foggan, he, he's made the point, and I agree with him. Staff also has to work late for this, and looking at the compromised position for council to come some early, because staff have to stay late, and it's a benefit to reduce the staff hours that, that are late. So it is, it's going to be interesting. I, I still think we need to have them on the same day.
I'd definitely say same day, that works, I think that's what everybody's used to. Another consideration, and, and I know it affects me, but some of us have to pick up our children after school, and to have, have us come at four-thirty, you know, I may not be able to make it. So, I mean, for everybody that works until five, maybe, maybe we could start at five, or four-forty-five, or, or four-thirty at the earliest, but just, you know, for, the work sessions are, I think, aren't just for council's benefit, I think they're for the public's benefit too.
Councilwoman Staley?
Is there any reason why we couldn't do the business meeting after our regular meeting? So that our regular meeting starts at five-thirty, we have it, and then once a month, we do the, the discussion, excuse me, the work session afterwards. So we'd have our business meeting at five-thirty, and then a work session afterwards as needed, or at least once a month.
Whatever the will of the council is.
Yeah, where the public could leave if they were not interested in the items that we were discussing, they'd be able to come and speak right away.
I wouldn't, I'm not trying to say no, but a lot of times, I know I say no, it's my job, but a lot of times, your work sessions are there to get a lot of information out to you right of way, and then we have an action item after at the later business meeting. But you're also indicating just once a month, so I, I know once a month may not be as much of a problem if people have to leave work a little early or rearrange something. And I'm not trying to tell you guys what to do, I'm just making some options available.
Mayor, I think the concern that we would have there is, there are many times our business meeting, how excited were we last council meeting? That we got out of here at what, seven-thirty, eight o'clock? When, I mean, we have some late-going meetings, and if that happens to be the same day as a work session that happens afterward, are we really going to take in all of that information that's being presented to us? Because it's going to be that late, something to consider.
I, I, I agree, I think, I appreciate the options, and I think they should all be considered on this list and put on this list for our consideration, but I agree that it's having them afterwards, I think would be checking out. Because just the lateness of the hour, unless we started earlier. So, but if we do, then the work session should come first. So let's add those to the list, and, and we can look at those as, as it comes forward the next time, but.
Okay, we will add those to the list, and I'll send a revised list out to you if you would not, not mind providing any
We will, and we will give you our, we'll give you our thoughts and opinions back to you. Is that, is that, so you can, you can find out if there is a consensus and come back with the things that are, you're honing down on, what the real options are. And that way, Councilman Watkins, who's not here today, can also weigh in on this, because I'm sure he'll have opinions too. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to thank Director Moline for sitting in for Manager Foggan this evening, who's not able to be with us. Thank you very much, look forward to seeing you there in the next session. That ends our work session discussions, and so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries, we'll reconvene at seven o'clock. Good evening, I'd like to call this session of the City of Kingman Council to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lingefelter?
Here.
Councilmember Melo Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Excused.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join us for the invocation given by the Imam, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
In the name of Allah, the entirely merciful, the very merciful, the owner of the day of judgment, it is you we worship, and you we ask for help. Oh Allah, make this a secure city and provide its people with fruits so that they may be grateful. Oh Allah, grant strength and wisdom to those who are responsible for the city and its people. Oh Allah, place love, harmony, kindness, and respect in the hearts of the people of Kingman for each other, amen.
Amen, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with A R S thirty-eight forty-one point oh-three A three to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First order of business this evening is approval of minutes, but we have no minutes this evening, is that correct? So we will move on to appointments. The appointment to be considered is the Clean City Commission appointment. The Clean City Commission currently has two vacancies. Regina Garcia and James Hildebrand have both applied to serve on the commission. However, both applicants reside outside the city limits. The commission currently has a member who lives outside the city limits. Therefore, in accordance with the Kingman Municipal Code, the council may appoint one of the applicants, but not both. Staff recommends appointing either Regina Garcia or James Hildebrand to the Clean City Commission. Are the applicants here this evening? And I would ask you if you want to come forward and speak to the council. Mr. Hildebrand? Please, please welcome, come forward.
First of all, I'd like to say what an honor it is to speak in front of the city council tonight. If I enjoy any success as a citizen in this fine community, it's because of city government. Members such as yourself, branches of government such as Clean City Commission, serve as an example to me. Your professional, your professionalism and your integrity serve as an example to me. First, I'll tell you something about myself. I'm highly motivated and an energetic, team-player type of kind of guy, okay? I constantly strive to reach new goals, learn new skills. I'm fiercely dedicated to family and community. I view community as the backbone of society. I'm also fiercely dedicated to Mojave County, which I was once an employee under Chief Darrell Reeves and Elaine Maestis, I served as juvenile detention officer, once earning the accolade of Juvenile Detention Officer of the Year statewide. I'm currently serving at G O Arizona State Prison Complex, Kingman. I've been there for almost eight years now. And I fully intend to serve the citizens of this community in a, some type of law enforcement capacity for as long as humanly possible. I want to start out by saying the reason why I want to become Clean City Commission, and I hope I'm not being too long-winded. I want to strengthen and enhance the quality of life of the citizens of Kingman. I want to help the Clean City Commission in their many difficult and sometimes unpopular decisions and recommendations to the city council. I have come to admire their culture of caring, concern, and corrective actions. And I would like to become a part of that. I would like to become a long-term member to carry on that culture and to promote a positive relationship with city council and our citizens of Kingman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hildebrand.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
I wasn't anticipating having to speak. I've lived here for four years, I actually grew up in Phoenix, but I've lived most of my adult life on the East Coast. I'm interested in the Clean City Commission because part of their responsibility is recycling, and that's something that's extremely important to me. Having lived on the East Coast, the East Coast doesn't have landfills anymore, they recycle everything. I'm kind of, I don't know that much about city government because I live in the county, but I'm most interested in having the seat on the council so that I can inform the rest of, I'm actually, I actually run a neighborhood watch in Butler. If those of you who know Butler, it's got its issues, and we're trying to clean it up. We're trying to make it a place where we all are proud to live. I am a retired registered nurse, I have a lot of time to volunteer now. I was a volunteer for the Red Cross, I volunteered at the shelter. I've volunteered with the county emergency management. I'm just looking for places to plug myself in to, you know, help out my community as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This evening, we have a ballot in front of us, but before we take time to fill this out, is there any discussion or comments? out, is there any discussion or comments by the council members or by the Clean City Who may be, who may not be here, I'm not sure. Who is not here? So, any comments or, I would entertain a motion if there are no comments or discussion? Or not, I would not. We're going to fill it out by ballot. That's our new procedure. So, let's, did you have a call?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Let's go.
I just want to tell these individuals, thank you for coming. I really like when they, when people that want to be on these commissions come and let us, you know, tell us about themselves. It's, it's nice. So I appreciate you taking the time to come.
Indeed. I would add to that, your dedication to service is evident and really appreciated, both of you. And so, you are already serving, and we'll take a moment now while our city clerk assesses the ballots.
And the votes were for Ms. Garcia.
Mr. Hildebrand, thank you so much for your application.
And just for formality's sake, could we just do a motion and an actual appointment? I know the, the voting was-
Certainly, certainly. I would entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Garcia to the Clean City Commission.
I'll move.
Have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second to appoint Ms. Garcia. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Now we have an item which I am very honored to be able to bring to the council, which is a proclamation. Actually, two proclamations this evening, but the first one will be a proclamation for Work Zone Awareness Week, April 8th through 12th. And Mr. Plante, would you please come up? I'm going to read this proclamation, and when we are going to give this proclamation to him, they've, we are asked to put on these wonderful new orange vests that has our name on it and come down all together to have a photo with Mr. Plante. So, did I understand that right, Mr. Plante?
Yes, Mayor. I do have a couple of things that I don't know if it's appropriate before or after the proclamation, just some kind of facts for it.
Okay, I think before would be good.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for your time. So you don't typically see me looking like the Kool-Aid Man's half-brother at council meetings, but this is a special occasion, a little bit early, but April 8th through the 12th is Work Zone Awareness Week. This is to bring awareness, as the name would imply, to the public of the 65,000 accidents that occur annually within work zones. 2017 saw 710 fatal work zone crashes inside that. Eighty percent of these were motorists and pedestrians, so it's not only the, and even more so in a larger scale, it's not only the men and women that are working within these work zones that are at risk, it's actually the motorists that are having to navigate through these. Obviously, Kingman sees its fair share of construction, especially right now. Twenty-nine percent of these fatalities were actually speed-related. What I thought was actually kind of alarming to myself at least, is you would think that most of the risk is for motorists and individuals and construction crews working on interstate areas, and 348 of the accidents actually occurred on arterial roads such as Stockton Hill. Many agencies and companies bring attention to work zone each year. One example, a lot of different municipalities and counties do, but the state capitol is actually going to color the Capitol dome orange through the week of Work Zone Awareness Week. So the big message is slow down. The slogan this year for Work Zone Safety Week is actually, or Awareness Week, sorry, is drive like you work here.
Thank you. And with that introduction, the proclamation. Whereas, the City of Kingman, along with the Public Works Department and all City of Kingman employees who have reason to work in the streets or public right-of-ways, in conjunction with the American Traffic Safety Association, are observing National Work Zone Awareness Week, April 8th to 12th, 2019. And whereas, National Work Zone Awareness Week, in its 19th year, is a national public awareness campaign that sends the message that we are all responsible for work zone safety. And whereas, National Work Zone Awareness Week is a way to raise public awareness for work zones and those who work in them. Motorists are encouraged to slow, to slow to posted speed limits, eliminate distractions while driving, and be watchful for roadway workers and their equipment. And whereas, the Federal Highway Administration statistics show that in 2017, there were 710 work zone fatal crashes and 799 fatalities, the majority of which were motorists, with 132 deaths accounting for roadway worker fatalities, a work zone crash occurred once every 5.4 minutes. And now therefore, I, Jen Miles, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim April 8th through April 12th, 2019, as National Work Zone Awareness Week in Kingman, Arizona, and encourage all motorists to remember that we all play a role in getting roadway workers home safely and to drive like you work here. So I would ask that we put on our vest and go down and wear our orange proudly.
Thank you. What, what you'll see on the front, I kind of failed in mentioning also, is the Safety Committee logo. That's actually who these vests are from. The Safety Committee is made up of people through departments and divisions throughout the city, my coworkers, my teammates, and we try and make things safe. I'll take the picture. You go.
They'll be great to wear on volunteering occasions. And the next proclamation recognizes the week of the young child. And I'd like to ask Erin Taylor to come up, because I was able to meet with her this afternoon, and we had a wonderful discussion of the First Things First program and how it's helping the children zero to five in Mojave and La Paz counties. And before I write, read the proclamation, would you like to add anything?
Sure. I just wanted to thank you again for your time and for space on the agenda today. Week of the Young Child is just a national recognition of those who work with young children. We know that 90% of brain development happens in the first five years of life, and things such as self-esteem, motivation, skills like that, really take root in those first five years. Parents are a child's first and best teacher, but there are other teachers, the caregivers at preschools, childcare centers, everything that they experience before they get to kindergarten really helps set the tone for those first five years. So Week of the Young Child, again, is a national celebration by the Association for the Education of Young Children to celebrate those who work with young children and really inspire the next generation of young learners. So thank you again for sharing, letting me have space on the agenda for the proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you and your organization for all you're doing. The proclamation. Whereas, the City of Kingman, along with the Kingman Unified School District, Baycock Head Start, and First Things First, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 8th to 12th, 2019. And whereas, these organizations are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our state's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Kingman, Arizona. And whereas, teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, birth through age five, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Kingman, deserve thanks and recognition. Whereas, public policies that support early learning for all young children are critical to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society. There, now therefore, I, Jen Miles, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim April 8th through April 12th, 2019, as the Week of the Young Child in Kingman, Arizona, and encourage citizens to work to support and invest in early childhood in Kingman. Week of the Young Child, and witness therefore, I here to set my hand. If you'd like to join me?
You're gonna get a picture?
Yeah. Those who's wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. And we have some speakers signed up, and the first would be Tim Woods, representing Mojave County Fairgrounds Association.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Member of City Council, staff. Thank you for having me. I just, and first and foremost, want to invite everybody to the Home and Garden Show, April 18th, 19th, and 20th. I would like a brief minute to tell you a little, a couple of things, or one thing that's going on, not this weekend, but next weekend. This is the Arizona Junior Rodeo. The entrance in this, their age group is five years old to 17. They come all over from the state of Arizona. Last year, we had over 1,300 participants, family here in Kingman for three solid days. According to Ms. Tammy Estenbrock, who is the Economic Development Director for Mojave County, the economic impact for the City of Kingman was over $700,000. This is just one event that we're doing at Mojave County Fairgrounds, your fairgrounds, everybody in Mojave County Fairgrounds. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. The next speaker is, I hope I get this last name right, Rick Varnt?
It's Farad Smith.
Farad, thank you. I might have gotten Smith.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak. I have a email here from my associate, Michael Boone. I was wondering if you all got it. Michael Boone referred to the fire chief, Mr. Rhodes, as he said he misled the body on this issue of a joint powers agreement. Chief Rhodes first approached this in September of 2017. I have the emails here, which, if you'd like, I'll leave them, and you can pass them out among yourselves. And this has been a hot topic with people in the NACFD Fire District.
Pardon me, just a minute. Mr. Cooper, I think this is an agenda item.
We don't allow a comment during reports, so it's appropriate for them to do it during the call of the public.
Pardon my interruption, but please continue.
No problem. So, the next thing I ask here is, I ask that perhaps this be taken for what it is. It's clearly in the chief's memo, he wants to take the district over. This should be called what it is, not a joint powers agreement. It's eventually going to be a takeover of the district. And a lot of people in the district don't want four people on the board of the NACFD responsible for decisions for thousands of people that live in the district, especially when those four people all have connections to Kingman Fire Department. Valley Vista has gone so far as to look at getting a boundary change to form their own department. They have gone from three fire stations under the terminated chief to one station. The service has gotten worse, and people are not happy. Plus, there's several items of litigation going on with this whole thing. I, I'm just going to make it what it is. Why don't you hold this off until we get through this? Hopefully, we'll be through this this year. The civil suits, the other things that are going on, it's really going to be confusing, and if things go the way I'd like them to go, it's going to cause you a lot of unnecessary time and effort. So I'm not going to stand here and rage against everybody. By the way, do you want these?
You could give them to the city clerk.
Okay. I'm not going to rage on and on, but I think it would be in your best judgment to wait until we get these things done, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any others? Next order of business is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items to be removed from the agenda?
I'd like to remove item F.
Mayor, item F has been removed by staff.
Okay. Well, twice removed. It's definitely removed, okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item G, please.
Item G. Any other items? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with items A through E.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve consent agenda A through E. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you. F will not be considered tonight because it has been removed by staff. G, procurement code. Council directed staff to proceed with the updated procurement code, including reformatting several of the sections and providing an index section. This is the completed version of the new procurement code with an effective date of July 1, 2019. Staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you to Carl. I appreciate it, and I just had one last question. I actually just learned just today that the city does not maintain a bidders list, a registered bidders list, and so I think that that's something that we need to look at. And my question to you is, is that something that we need to add to the procurement code, that the City of Kingman shall maintain a registered bidders list, or is that, is something that we need to handle administratively?
I think it's something we can do administratively, because I think the plan is, with the adoption of this, then we're going to work on a procurement handbook for all the staff, and part of that, what we'll do is we'll make sure we maintain, because I thought we had some, no bidders lists at all.
Yeah.
But I thought we had some types of bidders lists, but we can always promulgate that rule administratively, so, and that's the intent.
Okay, good. Yeah, definitely would, I'm going to stay on that, make sure that we- Yeah, definitely would, I'm going to stay on that, make sure that we adopt one. Otherwise, you know, how do new vendors or businesses get in with the city?
And the plan is, like you say, to do some updated training, which is why we wanted to hold off on the effective date. That gives us a chance to do some of that training once we get past the budget cycle, as well as then, the, we will have, we already have some standardized forms, but the plan is to do more standardized forms, as well as some, almost some basic checklists, to make it a lot simpler, to make sure people have checked off they've done the appropriate review of bidders lists and the notices that need to go out. So, the plan is to make it much simpler for the folks to utilize, so.
Sure, good. And to initially populate a bidders list, we could even work with the county.
Definitely.
And take theirs, and that would be a good starting point.
Yeah, definitely. And I know we've done some work with the county in the past, but definitely, whatever they have would be good to incorporate.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion to approve item G.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? We have a motion, a second, to approve the procurement code. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. There is no old business. We have two items of new business, and the first is, public hearing and consideration of Resolution Number 5200 for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow park model spaces within AAA Mobile Home Park located at 2023 East Morrow Avenue. Ava Page applicant and AAA Mobile Home Park LLC property owners have requested a conditional use permit to allow for six park spaces in AAA Mobile Home Park to be occupied by park models. The property is located at 2023 East Morrow Avenue and is zoned RMH6. Residential, manufactured home, 6,000 square foot lot minimum. A site plan has been submitted, which conforms to all requirements of the park standards and conditional use permit requirements of the Kingman zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5200. Ms. Schaefer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm actually having trouble closing my PowerPoint. Thank you. Just one moment. I have a small presentation, if you'd like to see it. Otherwise, I can just answer some questions either ways, okay?
I would like to see the small presentation.
Okay, you got it.
You probably worked to put that together.
There we go. Nope, that's not mine. One more time. Okay, here's mine. Thank you for that. Okay, so we do have the applicant here, Ava Page, and her representative, Chase Adams. The summary of the request is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for six park models, park spaces to be occupied by park models in AAA Mobile Home Park located at 2023 East Morrow Avenue. This item was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 12th and March 12th. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6-0 to approve the CUP with conditions. This proposal was initiated due to six park models be placed in the park without processing a CUP. The park manager was not aware that park models were not allowed in the park without a CUP, and has worked with staff for the past couple of months to rectify this matter. Here's the location of the park. The spaces marked in yellow are where the property manager would like the park models to be. And this also shows where the park models are proposed and the original park plan for this project. Here's just a little visual of what park models would be going into the park, so the ones that's already seen there is the mobile home, and then the park models, the ones sitting up on the trailer still. The zoning ordinance allows a maximum of forty percent of the park spaces to be occupied by RVs or park models in manufactured home parks in the RMH6 district with a CUP with certain conditions. AAA Manufactured Home Park was approved in 1996 and meets the manufactured home park requirements of the zoning ordinance. The minimum size space dimensions required for park models are 1,950 square feet. The park was approved with spaces that are 3,600 square feet and greater, so the spaces would remain the same, there'd just be park models on it. The park model spaces will be required to have a paved or gravelled, non-tannin parking space. There were no objections as far as comments to this proposal from city and outside reviewing agencies. Prior to the February Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there were comments and a petition received from residents from the park. Their main concerns were the following. They didn't want the park models placed in the park. If park models were approved to be placed in the park, they would prefer them to be placed in a section of the park rather than scattered throughout the park. The park models would devalue their manufactured homes value. Comments submitted by the park residents were included in the staff report, and there were no more comments received after the February Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There was also, in between the February and March meeting, there was a meeting held by the park manager with the residents to rectify some of these concerns. So, based on the findings of the application, it conforms to the goals and objectives of the Kingman General Plan 2030 and Standards for Review. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote 6-0 to recommend approval of the request for the CUP with the following conditions. The conditional use permit is for six park models in the designated spaces, as shown on Exhibit A, and will remain valid as long as the use remains active. If any of the park model spaces are not used for a period of one year or more, the space will revert to manufactured home space. The remainder of the spaces will remain designated for manufactured homes. The applicant must submit building permits and obtain approval prior to placing the park models on the spaces. The manufactured home spaces and park model recreational vehicle spaces shall meet the minimum space size requirement of the zoning ordinance. Any transition of manufactured home spaces to park model spaces will require the applicant to submit a new conditional use permit application for the revised park plan and for further review and processing. Any addition of spaces to AAA Mobile Home Park will require a revised park plan to be submitted for review and approval also. So, we really kind of conditioned this pretty good, probably. The applicant is present, if you have questions for them, and then I'm here if you have any as well.
Does the council have any questions for Ms. Schaefer? Or the applicant? This is a public hearing, and so I would open the public hearing, thank you, Ms. Schaefer, open the public hearing regarding the Resolution 5200 and the conditional use permit. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on this issue? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council on this issue? Pardon? You're right, so there is someone. Chase Adams? Thank you.
It's a long walk there. Mayor, I'm just a representative of the applicant, so if there's no other questions, our intent by the application is to better the park, to make it so that it has more space for residents and to use the space effectively to better the city. So, if there's no other questions, then I don't have anything else that I believe needs to be brought forward to the city.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? I close the public hearing. I would ask for the council to entertain a motion on this CUP and Resolution 5200.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve this 5200.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 5200. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion and second to approve, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. We'll now have a public hearing and consideration of Resolution 5201 authorizing a one-year renewal and modification of a conditional use permit, CUP, for a mini storage facility at 3345 East Andy Devine. On March 6, 2018, the Kingman Common Council approved Resolution Number 5132 granting a conditional use permit for a mini storage facility located at 3645 East Andy Devine Avenue. Jed Noble with Civil Works Engineering applicant, and Edward Dunham, property owner, have requested a conditional use permit for an extension of time of the CUP, and have also requested a modification of the CUP to allow a caretaker's residence on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5201. Mr. Egles, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a conditional use permit to allow an extension of time and a modification of a conditional use permit for a mini storage facility at 3645 East Andy Devine Avenue. The property owner is Edward Dunham, and the applicant is Jed Noble. The property itself is about three acres, three and a half acres in size, in Zone C3. It is located, now this is the zoning map of the site, it's Zone C3, it's surrounded by C3 zoning as well. It's located just to the southwest of the Dollar General store at Horizon Boulevard in Andy Devine. You can see across the street is the ADOT yard, the MVD offices, as well as the City of Kingman Public Works Department, and to the north is the Mojave County Public Works Yard. We posted the site, sent out the notices as usual. We didn't receive any comments from any neighboring property owners, except for one who just had some questions regarding the proposal. There were really no objections from any departments. It is, however, access, will be accessible or access from Andy Devine, which is a state highway. So, they will be subject to ADOT's review and approval in terms of driveways, possible deceleration lanes, left turn lanes, and so on. So, last March, the council passed Resolution 5132, which approved a mini storage complex on the site. Under the conditional use permit section of the zoning ordinance, if a CUP requires a building permit to be, to implement the CUP, it does have to be, the permit has to be issued within one year and substantial construction occurred. That hasn't happened in this case, however, the applicant has stated the civil plans are about ninety-five percent complete, may have intention to submit plans soon, and so this is an extension request so that the CUP does not expire. Additionally, there's some modifications to the original concept. Originally, the idea was to use Conex storage boxes as the building material for the mini storage units, as well as the office. Now, they are going to go to standard construction for those units. They're also planning on constructing a caretaker's residence on the site. That does also require a CUP, so we've wrapped the modification into the extension of time for you tonight. And this is the grading plan that's proposed at this point, this is not the final version, but it's a little hard to read, but the left side of the drawing is where the entrance would be off of Andy Devine. That's also where the office and residence would be located, and there would be about five or six mini storage buildings on the site. The northern part of the property would be an open storage area that would be screened from the other properties and from the street. This is just a diagram showing the proposed elevations of the caretaker residence, as well as the location of the office on the site. So, we went through all the required findings for a CUP. Again, it's, it meets the applicable regulations and the bulk regulations, doesn't appear to have any negative impact on the area. It is subject to the ADOT review and permitting process, as I mentioned. They will have to provide some landscaping on the site, that's normally required for any new development, at least ten percent of the site would have to be landscaped. They will also have to screen, as I mentioned, the areas that will be used for outside storage with fencing. We're recommending either masonry wall or a chain link fence. So, the commission reviewed this matter back in March and recommended, by a vote of 6 to 0, to approve the extension of time for one year, as well as the modification to allow the caretaker's residence with the following conditions. A driveway access and roadway improvements will be subject to ADOT's review and permitting process, and that the open storage areas would be screened with either masonry or chain link with double slats. And so, the Resolution 5201 is here for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Egles. Do any of the council members have a question, Mr. Egles? Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I would open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on Resolution 5201. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on 5201? Final time. Anyone would like to speak to the council on 5201? I close the public hearing. Counsel, I would entertain a motion on Resolution Number 5201.
Madam Mayor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 5201, please.
I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you. We move on to item eight, which is a department report. And before we move into that report, Mr. Cooper, I have a request here for speaking, but since this is not an action item and it's a report.
We don't allow us to comment.
At this time, because this is not an action item, this is simply a report. So, for the individual that signed up to speak on item eight, I would ask, I would ask you to look for when this is an action item and come back, or come back at a call to the public to voice your comments about this. Municipal Leadership Services for Fire Districts featuring Fire Chief Mark Gallard from Flagstaff. Chief Rhodes, if you would introduce us to this?
Yes, so, good morning, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, going back to February, when we brought this item forward, we talked about kind of timelines, and I think that was kind of addressed today. So, I wanted to kind of jump back into that before I introduce Mark and kind of what's led us here today. So, if we even go back to about 1991, actually, when Joe Dorner, our past Assistant Chief, was in leadership out of NACFED, him and then Fire Chief here were having these discussions. And I think it's precipitated through time to get us here today. And when I first arrived in Arizona, me and then Fire Chief Pat Moore had these discussions, me and Fire Chief Wayne Etter had these discussions. So, it's all those discussions that, that, how can we better serve the community? And that's what we're really here tonight for, because looking at this from a holistic picture, it's, that's what it's about, is service delivery and the ability to manage that. So, if we go back just a little bit, we talked in the last meeting in February about how this all kind of precipitated, and the NACFED Board approaching us after their attempts to hire Fire Chief, they went through an assessment center, and they contacted us. City Manager Foggan and I sat down with a couple of board members and kind of got to the point of what this proposal looks like. And that's, that's really what it is. As I said last time, a proposal, a starting point to discuss. And so, that's, that's really what led us here, but that proposal was based on one thing, because it's a rarity, a municipality and a fire district, two different governing entities that have to be separated, okay? So, so it's very rare. So, so looking at the Flagstaff model, Flagstaff and Summit, that's where we really drive this from. And I think a couple of concerns that, that we wanted to address was the leadership model piece, the citizen concern piece, and just how this works and how it would work, and some of those things. So, Chief Gaylord is here to kind of talk about some things. We've also, also in the audience is Jim Bailey, who is the chairman of NACFED, who's also here, and also interim Fire Chief Tim King is here. So, any of those to kind of answer questions, because ultimately, the guidance that we need is to either go forward and talk about an IGA or not, and that's what we're seeking, seeking tonight. Their Board did vote in January, late January, 5-0, to enter into this negotiation of an IGA. So, so with that, I'll introduce Mark Gaylord and be available for any questions and to wrap this up as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Pleasure to be here this evening to tell you a little bit about our experience in the City of Flagstaff and with the Summit Fire Medical District. I'll, I'll just try to take you through a chronology of how that experience has, has evolved to what it is today, and then certainly try to address what I might guess to be a public policymakers' concerns, and then absolutely feel comfortable answering any questions you may have about our experience. I became the Fire Chief of Flagstaff in August of 2013. Sometime in early 2015, the Fire Chief of the Summit Fire Medical District announced his retirement. And as preparations were being made regarding the recruitment of that replacement Fire Chief, and let me just put it a little more in context, I think in the context of the City of Flagstaff, if you're familiar with that, the Summit Fire District is east Flagstaff, across the backside of Eldon, and then the Highway 180 corridor as it comes out of Flagstaff towards Snowball. It's a rural fire district, not, not an urbanized center such as the City of Flagstaff. Chief Howard and I, and Chief Howard's, he supposed what would be the utility of an intergovernmental agreement with the city to provide a Fire Chief for Summit Fire District in lieu of Summit recruiting his replacement. And tend to have quite a bit of discussions about that. And as we considered that, and as I considered that, it occurred to me that it was worth pursuing for two public benefits. The first is we could provide a better service and protect our communities mutually at a higher level than we could individually. And the second is I could take better care of my firefighters in both communities by corrobor, by collaborating in this fashion. So from a public benefit, those two items are the big motivators for us to pursue the idea. So as we began to explore that, we put a management system in place wherein the Summit Fire District paid quite a bit less than the cost of a Fire Chief. The City of Flagstaff provided, and I'll say, in beginning in January of 2016, provided a deputy chief that began, that was the day-to-day chief for the Summit Fire District. I became their Fire Chief, but they had a daily overhead. The reimbursement, the, the financial equity was that the Summit Fire District's costs were the City of Flagstaff's cost to move its personnel into the configuration, backfill. Because it was a pilot program, we did not permanently fill positions. So we moved people into positions, which was also a primary emphasis for me and Flagstaff, trying to provide management, professional development opportunities for Flagstaff Chief Officers by moving them into some of these temporary roles. Those costs were recovered 100% by what was paid by the Summit Fire District. And the Summit Fire District, in actuality, paid less than the actual loaded cost of an act, of a new Fire Chief for their district. The, the pilot was a two-year pilot. One year in, we did a report card to report out to the Summit Fire Medical District and the City Council and City Management of Flagstaff. At that point, the command staff for Flagstaff Fire realized there was so much more that could be attained for both fire departments by perhaps moving that intergovernmental agreement to the next level. So we worked through a pretty arduous internal process to see if we still felt strongly about that. What I mean by that is our initial concept of putting a single deputy out and providing primary oversight for the Summit Fire Medical District was replaced by a new vision where we would simply combine the command staffs and the administration of the Flagstaff Fire Department and the Summit Fire Medical District, providing much-needed resources for the city, and in addition to that, providing a command staff that a single hiring of a Fire Chief for the Fire District could not be attained otherwise. And so we, we began to vet that idea. We started with the labor groups. I had no interest in pursuing that if the firefighters in both agencies didn't see the same utility, didn't see the same value in that as, as the management staff. Both labor groups that were involved in the IGA came forward and said they supported it. Then we went to the city manager's office, gave us preliminary support for the idea. It seemed to make a lot of sense to the then-city manager. He asked that we go out and find outside consultants that could provide analysis. The outside consultants were selected, that analysis was provided, and they supported that. Then the task of writing an IGA began, and that's no small thing either, as we try to craft an IGA that protects the public interest while understanding we need to have a win-win for both governmental entities. And so that was perhaps new ground, and we were, worked a little bit longer on that than we had anticipated, but we were able to secure that. And since January of, excuse me, since September of 2018, the IGA was executed by the Flagstaff City Council and the Summit Fire Medical District. And we have begun the process of systematically integrating the command staffs and the program management of both the Flagstaff Fire Department and the Summit Fire Medical District. And so that has been quite an adventure for me. And the, at the end of the day, we feel very strongly that we're pursuing a path that's in the best interest of the citizens of both governmental areas. We feel like we're raising the level of service that comes when you take two disparate agencies, perhaps different training levels and perhaps different equipping levels, and you begin to, to equalize that through training and through process and procedure, and you begin to protect your firefighters on a higher level. So with that, I would also say we have, and I was telling Chief Rhodes this earlier, it's not an easy ride, and however, we have found it to be worthwhile. The theme of our discussion in public policy is an old proverb that I think really speaks to what our effort has been about. And the proverb says, "If you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together." And that's exactly what we've been pursuing. With respect to where we're at, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And Chief, have I addressed all the issues that you would like me to?
Thank you so much, Chief. Just a quick question, how long is your IGA? How long does it extend?
The initial pilot IGA was a two-year pilot. After the one year, and within that IGA, one of the requirements was that we report out. So at the one-year mark, we realized we could do more. And so the second IGA, which we just initiated September of last year, is five years. Really, that became necessary because some of the changes we needed to put in place. For instance, I, I mentioned in the pilot IGA that we needed to make sure we didn't have any personnel movements that we couldn't undo, pending on the outcome of the pilot. In this particular case, we felt like we needed to have a little bit more length in the IGA to allow us to put positions in place and allow us to overcome some of the weaknesses of the initial pilot, which was, you know, we're kind of a lame duck organization after the one-year mark. Are we going to continue this? Or are we going to, everybody go back to their neutral corners and act independently again? And so we kind of made the case with both the elected bodies that a little bit more term in the IGA was really an important part of making it all work over the long run.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Chief? Vice Mayor.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. When you first were looking at doing this IGA, what was the feeling of the citizens that were being served by both of the organizations about it?
On the district's side, very little public input, if any. On the city's side, very little public input, if any. My elected officials in Flagstaff had some very reasonable concerns that they asked be addressed associated with public taxpayer equity, making sure that we're not commingling and so forth, the, the actual budgets. And just to kind of put it in perspective, earlier in the evening, and there's been some mention of a joint powers authority. We do not have that in our particular situation. I, I, I continue to go to city council meetings, now I get to go to fire board meetings, and I have a fire board, a city council, and a city manager. And I appreciate all of them, but it has kept me a little busier. We maintain two budgets, so we don't, we don't have what would be viewed as a joint powers agreement in place. And I think that's really an important thing. I absolutely think that within halfway through the five-year IGA, we'll be in a position to perhaps ask the question and conduct some feasibility analysis of whether a joint powers authority makes sense as the next level or continue in the current fashion. There are clearly some advantages in my mind about pursuing that, but it's a lot to take on all at once. And I think our slow progression into that has been helpful, demonstrating to the community the benefits that we saw as they get more comfortable with the idea of cooperation with the two entities. Thank you.
Anyone else? Are the metrics, performance metrics, the same for both entities, the, the district and the city?
Madam Mayor, could you repeat the question?
Are the performance measures and the, the standards and the metrics used to gauge performance the same? Are they agreed to and, and the standards for performance of the firefighters or the organization as a whole?
Thank you for the question. So the performance metrics associated with firefighter expectations has been normalized, so they are the same. And so the expectation for performance, training, and so forth. And to be honest, we benefited by some work we've done in our region. There's about five departments that make up the greater Flagstaff region. And so we had begun to do a little bit of that prior to the actual agreement between the city and the Summit Fire District. With respect to levels of service, they are very different. Summit Fire Medical District continues to be a rural fire district, so our expectations associated with response time and staffing differ a bit from the city, which is much more urbanized and has a much more urbanized call line. Put it in perspective, the Summit Fire Medical District runs about 10% of the calls that the city does.
Okay.
And it remains that way. And so that's one of our challenges, to make sure that we don't somehow assimilate that to a watered-down level of service for the city, nor inappropriately provide an urban level of service to an area that remains rural. But wherever possible, within the constraints of two governing bodies, we're trying to normalize all performance metrics and, and all benchmarks.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? Vice Mayor.
I would have questions of our, our chief when the time is right. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. Very helpful.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Chief Rhodes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Rhodes, I just have a few questions for you. Why has NACFed been unsuccessful with hiring a chief? I don't, I don't understand what's going on. Eder, is his, was his name Eder? He was let go in May of last year?
Chief Eder, yes. And so...
So why, why have they had problems?
So to be fair with that, I'd probably, I'd almost like to defer to their chairman, Jim Bailey's here. He could probably speak to that directly, whereas we can speak about some of the, the interactions and other things, because, and their history, history of Fire Chiefs. But I'd rather defer to him on that, just so it's more direct, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, sure. I have other questions as well. Maybe we could address those first. So the proposed, is it an IGA?
So what's out there now is simply just...
Just a concept.
Here's what it looks like, because, because when we first sat down with Chairman Bailey and, and Board Member Collins, it's what does this look like? And so a lot of what you see there is, is excerpts from the model that exists. And so that was kind of get, the juices flowing, to start thinking about what could this look like? What does this look like? Because neither Kingman nor NACFed had really thought about what does this look like? And we talk about leadership models and training and that type of stuff. So that's kind of what that is, the, the start of those talking points. But a lot of those talking points are directly from the IGA, and that would be the next step if, if that's the direction given, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I guess my first question would be, you know, with the exception of the Kingman Airport and the industrial park, which the city is owning, it owns and it's operating, that's outside of city limits. So I understand why we want to make sure that our fire service out there is top-notch for our industry. I get that. But for other places out in the incorporated areas, I don't understand why the city would want to get involved.
So we do have automatic aid agreements. We have automatic aid and mutual aid. So, so there's a couple of things there. One is what I refer to as bandwidth. So out there, their structure is, their size is roughly one-third of the city of Kingman's. With that, you get a, you get a Fire Chief and an Admin Secretary, whereas I have a staff, so we can address training, prevention, all those other things as a staff, as part of this agreement, to make it whole. That way, when we're spawning firefighter safety, and, and we've had a couple of safety issues and training issues, that, that we can precipitate and kind of spread our model, which has been, I think, pretty successful for the city of Kingman, spreads it out over the whole, what people think of as the city of Kingman. And you bring up the airpark, which is a great example, the, the district runs that. We respond on mutual aid out there. But we also respond on Gordon. But, but people don't understand that that's, that's, one side is the district and one side is, but it's all kind of the city of Kingman. So if we're thinking about the, the grand structure of things and making us more operational efficient and those type of things, that's what we think about. Because, so we start thinking about these automatic aid agreements. For instance, if we get a fire on the south side of the district or on the north side of, of, of Kingman, we'll get, we'll dump the entire city going north, so we don't have anybody. We're effectively, a, a good automatic aid agreement, a good agreement, should be two and two operating together, so there are, our outlying areas are covered. And those are the things that we can work through and get to as part of this. It's just more operational effectiveness.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I ask that because of the, the issue that was mentioned previously about taxpayer equity. And in what's been proposed right now, it includes your services as management. Does it also include HR, city HR, city risk management, IT? How are they handling those, or would those be something that we would be sharing as well?
Two, two separate government entities. So from that standpoint, really what we share is, is the leadership or the Fire Chief model, and that's it. We, we can't use Carl or city attorney or Tina, as much as I'd love to, to use her in that, we can't. It's, it's two separate government entities. As, as Mark said, the thing that changes there is I have this elected Board, and I would report to the district Board as well. And we would use our staff as appropriate in the, in their special, those special areas of operations, training, prevention, et cetera, to do that. But that, that is it as far as, as far as shared services. It is, it is those white shirts and myself. Really, that's, that is it.
The seven of us were elected to look out for the best interest of the city, to protect the city. And we heard a speaker earlier this evening that talked about maybe some investigations or some litigation. You know, when you put on the city hat, what sort of liability does this expose the city to? I mean, we have to protect the city.
So city manager Foggan and I have spoken about that and some of these issues that just like arose today and, and what that looks like. We talked about that early on in this process. If we didn't think... process. If we didn't think that it was feasible and just and the right thing to do, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be here today. We can do other things and eliminate some of those things. So we've had those discussions and we feel it's just in moving forward. We don't see that.
But I don't think you answered my question. Does it expose the city to any more liability?
Not that we've looked at. And again, we've had extensive discussions going that. That's why that board is in place and that's why it is two separate entities. Again, I report to that board. The reporting structure is a little bit different there, such as their financial and some of their human resources, things like that, that are a little bit different than ours. So it's run through their board. And because it's a sole entity, that's not a whole lot of departments like we are. It's one sole entity, and that is the fire district. So and that's where that board comes in as that overall decision-maker. And I gain approvals just like I would through a city manager, only it's a board out there in the district.
And really, they're just looking to get an increased level of training or service response? Why not just negotiate for some training assistance and all of those things that they need and not merge?
So it's not necessarily a merger by any means. It's not that. It is still separate. But that's, again, the cost of a fire chief with benefits and everything else, this is cheaper for them. Plus, they don't get just a fire chief. It's the full spectrum of services that we could provide. So and that's kind of what they came to us with, was this type of management services agreement. We do some, we were active in training and that's kind of went through some peaks and valleys, I would say, over the last couple of years. That is just ineffective. We're getting back to that piece, but it's, again, mutual aid training without necessarily the oversight that we provide in that or the specialization.
Okay. And I've asked this before, and I don't know if you had an answer, but is this, would this be the first step in a fire district? I mean, because to me, it would make more sense to do a Kingman Fire District, and then if you're still interested, to merge the two fire districts together.
So in some of the information provided, just for a fire district for ourselves, I think there's a larger discussion. And just looking at even the financials, and Tina and I have looked at those again over the last, kind of refreshed those, and looked at all the factors that bring us to a district and whether that makes financial sense. That's a much larger discussion, I would say. So does this have an impact on us going to a district? I don't see that. I see it as two separate, really separate discussions. I really do. There are district to districts who operate differently and have done it different ways, where they merge under one board, or they still keep two separate boards and actually a third board. In the Prescott Valley-Chino area, they consolidated two districts. And so they have a Chino board, Yavapai, I'm sorry, it's Chino and Yavapai. And then they have a combination board. So they actually have three different boards that govern that model. So it's a little bit different as well. So lots of different ways to structure it, so.
Thank you. Those are the, the only other question I would have would be about the chief. And the only reason I ask that is because I don't want to bring the city into a contentious situation. I don't think that would be in the best interest of the city to do that. So that's why I asked the question about the chief.
Yes, sir.
Did you want Chairman Bailey to come up and address that?
If possible.
Thank you, Chairman Bailey. I'll bring him back up.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Jim Bailey. I'm currently the board chair for Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District called NACFed. Actually, your concern was why we haven't been successful in hiring a chief. And what happened was after we terminated Chief Wayne Eder, which I'll add was with cause, we actually advertised out to the southwest United States, and we didn't get any responses. One of the things actually, and we actually hired Brenda Tranquina from Human Resources Strategies to do that for us. And when she actually advertised in the southwest, what most people do as candidates is they'll research the district and try to find out kind of like what the history of the district is. Unfortunately, with all the accusations that have been thrown at us as a board and as individual board members out there in that district, they're all a bunch of fabrications. You were actually misled tonight. There's a very limited amount of people that are protesting the attempt at an IGA for administrative assistance. And what there is, there's a group of approximately 10 to 12 people who are doing all the complaining. All the advertisements and all the stories that have been in the papers have all been a bunch of fabrication and people love reading like the nasty stuff going on in the fire district. We've actually asked both the standard and the minor to come and actually report on how well things are going. And there's just no interest there because people don't want to read about how well it's going. All they want to do is read the heartache. And so anyway, we didn't get any response from our first southwest advertising with Brenda. So we opened it up and actually changed the requirements just a little bit. We had four people that actually applied for the position. One was a local retired fire chief. And then we also had a fire chief from down along the river communities. And then we also had two people from other places in the United States. Both of our local person and the one from down along the Colorado River had to drop out for whatever personal reasons they had. So we had two qualified applicants. They looked fantastic on paper. But when you actually do an assessment center and you put those people through actual situations that are unique to our fire district, neither one actually did well enough to where they were even invited for an interview with a board. And so, I mean, that's actually what we're, you know, as soon as people start doing that background investigation stuff, they see all the negative stuff that's going on with our district. It's been a nightmare. I don't know if that's what these people are actually doing, just trying to cause as much grief as they can for us. But it actually has a very negative impact on the fire district. And currently, you know, I'm sure you all are aware, we actually have a number of IGAs and like agreements with the city. As Chief Rhodes said, we have the mutual aid and automatic aid areas. And we also share the fuel yard, which is a huge benefit for the fire district out there. We also contract with the city. I'm not sure if it's contract or if it's an IGA, but we also have their fire prevention people coming out and doing, or I'm sorry, hydrant maintenance. They come out and actually take care of the hydrants for us, which is a huge cost-effective step for us to take as well. And with the agreement that we would have with Chief Rhodes and his administrative staff, it actually would be saving us money on hiring a fire chief at this point. And what we're trying to do is extend this down the road. And hopefully, we're going to get a better reputation over the next year, year and a half, and then maybe we can go back out and do another hiring process and we'll get some people that are interested.
You just answered my next question. I was going to ask about, you know, what your board, if there had been any discussion about what comes after that two years, if it's a long time or a long-term, excuse me, sort of an arrangement or just exactly what you just said, going out with another hiring process or something.
Yeah, right now, we're actually just looking for assistance with our administrative functions. We have a battalion chief that's been filling in now for 10 months as our interim chief. That's Tim King. He's seated in the back here. He's doing a really good job. But with him actually stepping up, he's actually trying to cover as our interim chief. And then he's also still trying to function as a battalion chief on his shift on weekends when he can. It's a lot of work for him. And because we have him promoted, we're actually having to backfill his position. Then we have to backfill that captain's position. Then we have to backfill everybody that's, you know, all the way back down to the firefighters. So it's expensive. We're paying overtime, you know, at least one person every shift on that shift. And it's getting expensive. We've already exhausted our overtime budget for this year.
Well, I appreciate you coming to the meeting tonight and to be available to Council and for us to ask questions. Thank you very much.
Yep. Appreciate all your time and appreciate all your effort for considering this anyway.
Oh, okay. We have another question. Councilwoman Staley?
I'm just curious how your firefighters feel about making this agreement and working in cooperation together with the management?
You know, initially, then I can say, when we first got the proposal from Chief Rhodes and Mr. Foggins, actually, as soon as it came in, I asked our interim chief, Tim King, to scan that and get it out to the board members because we had an upcoming board meeting. So we wanted to give all the board members enough opportunity to bring questions. And actually, it's completely 100% my fault. I told them also to make copies of that and put a copy in each station so the guys were aware of it because we try to be as transparent as we can with our guys. We don't like to surprise them with anything. They actually do a great job and they're not real high-paid people by any means, but they do a good job. And so I was trying to be completely transparent with them. And unfortunately, we had a couple of people that kind of took it the wrong way. And instead of just bringing comments, they actually kind of sent out emails and got some people kind of fired off about it, as well as the people kind of seated back here did the same thing. They came into our meeting, the two or three nights later, they started saying, this is nothing but a city of Kingman takeover. They were told no less than three times, this is not a city of Kingman takeover. Doesn't matter what we tell them. They hate everything we do. They hate everything we say. We've been subject to no less than 24 different lawsuits filed by this group. The latest one is all just as fictitious as everything else is. It's a bunch of made-up stuff. And these people have made complaints to not only our county attorney's office. They've also named some of our county board supervisors. They've named a couple of those people. So Yavapai County has looked at some of these issues. They've made complaints to the FBI, the DOJ, the Attorney General's Office, the Arizona Budsman, and I couldn't tell you who all else. So everything they've actually complained and accused us of has been looked at by no less than some very high operating agencies in the state and on the local levels. And we have been found, have done nothing wrong. And they've actually attacked us for everything that we've ever suddenly done 10 years ago. And we actually haven't been found guilty of anything. So these frivolous lawsuits, we're not looking at them to go away anytime soon. But what they're doing is they're naming the fire district and then they're naming the board members that they don't like, which is mainly me and three other guys that are on there now. And everything we say and do is wrong. You can't make them happy with anything. So that's all I can tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other questions for Mr. Bailey? Then I'd ask Chief Rhodes to come back up, please.
Thank you.
Would you like to ask him some questions?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Staley has some questions.
I just have two questions for you. One of the things that I've heard a few times tonight is about the opportunities for improving training. And I'm wondering if we would do any training of NACFed firefighters at our training facility?
Yeah. And actually, and that's what I talked about earlier, is we've actually moved in some of those pieces. We actually had one of their engines last week come down for, and due to lack coordination, we would have had some more. And rightfully, we should be up there, but it's a logistic move. So yes, yes, and yes. It only makes sense when we're out operating together that, and I can go back to something as simple as incident command. There's an incident command system, how you structure incidents whenever you're out on an emergency. We've kind of changed that in Mojave County and across the US, something called Blue Card. It's just a whole system. So we're one of the early adopters in bringing everybody into that. But that takes practice. That takes drills. That takes instructors that we have. And getting everybody on the same page, talking on the same sheet of music is very important to us. And we just haven't had all the opportunities that we should have in the last few years, so.
I'm wondering if that would give us a chance to get funding from their fire district and funding from the city to improve our training facilities. That's something that we've talked about, is a need for upgrade as our city grows and we get taller buildings and these kind of things. So do you see that as an opportunity, as maybe something that would come out of this?
I think there's a lot of opportunities. But to speak to that, again, two separate government entities. And just like, what do we do a year from now? What do we do two years from now? Maybe a year from now, like Chief Gaylord says, maybe this doesn't work. Maybe just, okay, let's both go our separate ways. We still do mutual aid, automatic, maybe that's it. But maybe we help them get over this hurdle to where that is. Maybe in two years, we think, or a year or two years, we think, man, this is the model. And maybe it becomes more of those collaborative relationships. Because, again, we have a lot of districts around us. There's actually another district out there, out there like Mojave Ranchos, that's also looking into similar agreements and have approached other places. That one doesn't really fit us right now, or I don't know what the future holds of that. The thing that makes this so interesting is one street, a couple of streets really, but Gordon. That separates, but nobody knows that separation. So it makes a lot of sense. And we can talk about incidents that have occurred either way, where their firefighters are watching us work and, or we're watching them because we're not dispatched together. It's just not the way it worked, so.
My other question for you was about the opportunity to terminate the IGA. We heard a little bit from the board member about all the problems that they're having.
Right.
And so if they have a new elected board and they decide they want their own guy, or if we see too many problems and we just don't want a part of this any longer, do we have a way of getting them?
100%. And so a couple of things with that. I can't emphasize that enough. So when I was done a minute ago, Chief Gaylord talked to me, Summit had an existing EEOC complaint or sued against them whenever this all first started down that road. So the attorneys got together for the two and made sure that the city was taken care of and would not assume any future liabilities. So if you can get a couple of attorneys to agree and ultimately a council to agree on that piece, as well as that termination piece, which all of our IGAs have in some sense, whether it's a 30-day, an immediate, or 90-day, all of them have it in some way. So this would be no different. And I think very, very important to have.
Very good. Thanks, Chief.
So this is a leadership model IGA?
So it's a management, so we call it a management proposal. So it's because that's what it is, is for management of the district.
And the command brigades, and this is all, these are all things I'm not that familiar with. But then that would establish a better sense of communication and implementation? Is that, that's the ultimate goal?
So, of course, yes. So using the specialized areas, for instance, Jack Yeager, the operations chief, he would oversee and help with their battalion chiefs, our battalion chiefs, and the response model on a daily business. And Keith Eaton, prevention, community risk reduction, would help with that piece. Right now, they have an inspector, but he's on a shift, which is limiting to say the least with all those businesses. Of course, training, training's one of our fortes. And between Rink and Adrian up there, that model extends. And it's, so the other fascinating part to this is we talk about community. Over half my department worked at what was Walupai Fire Department or the current NACFed. Rink Gordon actually is still part, I think, are you still part-timing there? He hadn't turned in his gear. He just promoted. So he may be turning that in. But that's the unique piece of that, is all of our people know each other and they work hand in hand. It's just some of the limitations with management, some of the ups and downs of that. That's why, that's why we're here today. And Tina and I were talking about this earlier. What are my thoughts? And I think in four years, I think we've gotten to know each other a little bit. And if I didn't think this would work, I wouldn't be here. If I didn't think it could be successful, I wouldn't be standing up here. I wouldn't be subjecting myself to some of the other stuff. I wouldn't. I just, that's not how it works. But what I ultimately see is a better Kingman, a better total Kingman. We talked about Kingman High. Kingman High is deep in the district right now. It should be protected by us because, again, a lot of my people are graduates from there. So, again, working that collaborative relationship and making it just better, safer for not only, not only the firefighters, but the citizens overall. It's better service, plain and simple. And I think we've seen that model in the last four, four-plus years change and for the better, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions?
I just have one more comment.
Councilwoman Wade and then Councilwoman Staley.
He's going to let me go. My only last comment is just after hearing all of this, my main concern is that Kingman Fire Department has such a fantastic reputation. I am slightly concerned that, you know, once we help this fire district out, there might be some confusion of who's responsible for what. And then all of a sudden, KFD, you know, starts to lose that public image that you've worked so hard on.
So two things there is, one, in the event of emergency, people don't know. They simply don't know what's on that, what's on your shoulder, what's on your patch. They don't know. And I think we can improve that. I think we can improve that level of service. Again, if I didn't think we couldn't or it would tarnish what we have, I see it as a success story a year and two years from now, when we're talking the same language, we're doing all those same things. And again, what else does it lead to? And we've basically mentioned some fleet services and other things that may be available to shop out and do some other things. So this is, we have lots of agreements already in place. And that's, that's what I see in this as well. So I don't see it. There is some, and again, we talked about that in our early discussions, exactly some of this that happens today and will happen in the future. It's, so some of that is weathering a storm, but I think it gets us to our end in goal. And as Chief Gaylord said, I don't know, quoting proverbs, kind of caught me off guard out of it.
That was pretty good.
But taking, yeah, very, very disappointed in him right now. But walking that together, and I don't think we've ever had that chance between district and city to do that in the fire service, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Wade?
Thank you. Aside from the, aside from the benefits that you've mentioned, that you're, you're clearly convinced that, you know, it'd be better and safer, are there any financial incentives or cost reductions that would be afforded to the city if we were to do this? And I know that, you know, obviously our leadership's time would sort of some, to some degree be diverted. So to some degree, you can equate, you know, your time and, and your effort into a cost, you know, a burden on the city. But can you, can you talk to that?
I think, I think time is the ultimate thing. I, I really do. Because from, from my standpoint, it is additional board meetings, it is gaining that understanding, doing some other things, the things that, that have to be done whenever you're meeting people and, and going through what that management would take. So time is, is probably the biggest thing that, that I see it being. Is that limiting to Kingman? No, because I, I take the building department from a couple of years ago. When we took that in, it wasn't that, all right, we're going to make this position, we're going to add three more people. We didn't do that. We kind of took it in with the structure that it had. And we didn't add any more positions to manage that. Our leadership model, our management model kind of took that over. And I think today, if, if I'm correct, you haven't gotten phone calls. And that's the ultimate sign of success for me when it comes to that, when it comes to the building department, that our customers are happy and they're getting the service that, that they need in the building area. So it extends to the, to our fire customers and emergency, non-emergency response as well. So I can take that leadership model, taking on something that's very unique to the fire service in the building department world and what we've, what we've made that today. And, and that's what I see, that's what I see here. In something that we're very familiar with.
And you mentioned, and maybe I misheard this or didn't understand it, but you mentioned that at times there might be a little bit of confusion with respect to certain areas that maybe, who knows who covers or when two people respond at the same time. Would some kind of, would this help to alleviate that? Would, would people be kind of on, on the same system type thing?
So currently, we're under, one of the agreements that we're under right now is the communications agreement. So our dispatch center that we manage also dispatches the police department plus all the fire districts around us. So with that, you have certain run cards, certain blocks of town that if it comes in this area, this unit responds and so forth. With that, the current automatic aid agreement and it, we'll just say early 2000s. I want to say 2001, 2002, somewhere in there. Obviously, the level of service has changed in the last 17 years. We need to address that. There's technology out there today that's very successful. You don't have to go very far to our north to Las Vegas and Henderson or down, down in the, in the valley. It's a collaborative agreement. It is a closest unit. The technology's there right now. We just have to be working on the same page and work out those bugs. And what better way to do that than, than under this?
And are we not already on the same?
No.
Do they have their own dispatching units?
No, we, we dispatch for them. So our run cards are set up to where we dispatch them. And again, there are some limitations there based on where that call is and, and the limitations of those agreements as they currently stand.
And if there are instances where you would respond to an area where we're not maybe necessarily required to respond to, but do so out of a, you know, out of a courtesy type situation or, or just for public safety?
Right.
When the two different fire departments arrive and they have different training, does it kind of get confusing when one?
It can, yes. So what we have, we have a couple of things across the state. We have a statewide mutual aid compact. We also have an Arizona mutual aid system that, that Mark and I have both worked very diligently on that piece to where I can go to the south end of the state on a, on a specialized call if, if that was the need. The odds of us going that south is not likely, but your neighbor should be on the same page. And we had, we've had some incidents that have caused trouble in our, in our training, in the way we talk and the way we manage incidents, down to the task level of how we operate. So yeah, there have been some significant differences that have, that have caused some issues.
Do you think that those incidences would be reduced or eliminated if?
I think, I think eliminated by the nature of what we do, the dynamics of an emergency, whether it's a, whether it's a cardiac arrest, a respiratory emergency or a house fire, they're all so different. But I, I can say this, and I've had a couple of discussions out there. I think they're greatly, greatly reduced within a short amount of time by, by us taking this on, just by the structure that we bring, the framework that we, that we bring. And in the, the discussions with Tim and, and a couple of his battalion chiefs out there, I think those get addressed immediately.
Any other comments, questions? It's an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you, chief, for coming from Plax staff. Truly, truly informative.
Thank you.
Our next item is our announcements by mayor, council members and city manager. And I think because we have Supervisor Watson and Supervisor Bishop here, I want to take a moment while you're sitting here to announce that, as you know, we're moving back to city council on April 16th. That's our plan. And, but it has been a true pleasure to be in this building and, and this facility. And I, we appreciate that you have been a great partner with the city and the whole board of supervisors, allowing us to be in this facility. And we hope that in the future, when we have items, we know are going to be really full of people that, you know, we can come back and, and take advantage of your great hospitality. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
On behalf of all of us. Thanks, guys. Thank you. And also, I have to add, since you're here, and yesterday was pretty momentous with the county board of supervisors agreeing to take some roads into the county's maintenance plan out, out at the industrial park and airport, four roads, I think. And that's a big, that's such a big support for our economic development growth out there. And that benefits all of us. And so thank you very, very much. Really appreciate it. I'll move on. I'll start down at this end. Do you have any announcements?
I actually would just like to say thank you to Tim Woods for stopping by and sharing with us what's happening out at our fairgrounds. There's a lot that happens that we work hand in hand out there. So it was kind of nice to hear from him and hear what was going on.
I just wanted to mention that Congressman Gosar's staff will be holding office hours tomorrow at the City of Kingman Engineering Department from 2:00 to 4:00. I think Julie's going to be there. And if you have any concerns about federal or state topics, please go see Julie between 2:00 and 4:00 tomorrow.
Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I just would like to also thank Supervisor Bishop, Supervisor Watson. Yesterday at the meeting, when you approved those roads at our industrial park, that was a really strong, powerful message to Kingman area industry. And I just can't thank you enough. We had a lot of companies that were watching, Kama was watching. And, and that partnership is just so crucial, as you, as you know. So thank you so much.
Councilwoman Wade?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Councilwoman Staley?
Yes, I just wanted to talk about the Main Street Conference that Gary Kellogg, myself, a member of the Economic Development Commission, and then a business owner and member of the Clean City Commission attended last week in Seattle. We went through four days of great training and are bringing home a wealth of information. We all attended different sessions, but we covered historic preservation, economic development, business growth and entrepreneurship in your historic downtowns. And we are having a meetup on the 10th and then we'll be bringing all of that back to the city to help further progress our downtown.
That's very exciting.
Very exciting.
Thank you for attending and all those that did attend, Mr. Kellogg. Director Mullane, I know that you're, you're standing in for Manager Foggan and that's very appreciated. Was there anything that you wanted to share?
You covered it, Mayor.
I covered, that was the big deal, wasn't it? We're moving back. Okay. I have one final thing I'll mention. This past Saturday, I was privileged to meet with Senator Martha McSally, along with Mayor Brady and Mayor Shehe from Lake Havasu. The City of Kingman actually hosted her meeting here at the powerhouse. And I wanted to thank Josh Noble and the powerhouse team, Diane and the others that worked very hard to set up the meeting room and, and make sure that the accommodations were perfect for that meeting. It was a very excellent discussion with the senator, discussing our infrastructure and things like our transportation infrastructure at a federal level. She's very willing to work with us and wants to support our, any build applications that we're putting in and things of that, that nature. But the topics ranged from boroughs to land swaps to water and, and other things. It was just a real productive hour. And, and everyone did talk about equally, I'm glad to say. But we really appreciate her being here and listening to, to the constituents. So with that, council requests for future work session, agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. Are there any, any request, work session items? Vice Mayor?
I would have one. As everybody may or may not know, the City of Kingman is actually in the process of releasing over 1,800 acres in phase two of the airport industrial park. That's very exciting in and of itself. It also provides us an opportunity to look at a work session to talk about, do we want to annex those sections in phase two right now? And then look at some special districts to handle roads, electricity, sewer, things like that. I'd like to have a work session about that.
Thank you. Any other items? Then I would take a motion to adjourn. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming.